Good afternoon and welcome to the 22nd Annual Award Ceremony of the St. Clair County Association of School Boards. For those of you who have never been here before, the St. Clair County Association of School Boards was created in 1966 as an educational networking platform thing to help school board members be able to be further educated on how to be school board members, network with each other, and exchange of ideas. Twenty-two years ago, a creative bunch in that group decided it would be a good idea to create this program to recognize students who aspire to be educators, the mentors who inspired them to want to do so, outstanding board members from the districts, and recently we've added an M A S B, Michigan Association of School Boards, portion. It used to be done at regional meetings, now they come to our local meetings and present things to certificates and awards from trainings that our school board members have taken through them here. So that's just a nice little extra. We'll get started right off here, and this year's keynote speaker is Stephanie Ford from Algonac. She graduated from Algonac in 1997 and has taught in Algonac for the last 10 years. She went to Northern Michigan University and graduated there in 2001 with a degree in elementary education with endorsements in social studies and language arts, and she has also earned a master's degree in administration and leadership from the University of Phoenix Online in 2006, and she and her son, she and her husband Jason have two young sons. Stephanie?
Thanks so much for your kindness. It is sure wonderful to have been asked to be the keynote speaker for the St. Clair County Association of School Boards Awards Presentation. What an amazing honor to speak to an exceptional group of scholarship recipients, educators, administrators, and board members. Mr. Goulet, I'd also like to thank you for the introduction and the opportunity to be a part of this event. You see, teaching for me was always something that I wanted to be a part of. I was the little girl asking the teachers for extra worksheets at school to play school at home. I was the little girl calling all of my friends over, sitting them down, passing out those worksheets and watching over everyone like a hawk to make sure they were doing their work. I was the little girl who had a red checking pen at the age of six, and you better believe that I would check those papers and pass them back to my so-called students. Today's scholarship recipients were asked to write an essay on a mentor teacher who inspired them to go into the field of teaching. Their mentor teachers are here, and I am certain that I can describe each person as kind, dedicated, happy, energetic, humorous, outgoing, passionate, and flexible individuals. I am lucky enough to have had these teachers like this my entire education, and of course some stood out more than others, but I always had a constant feeling that my teachers cared and wanted me to be the best person that I could. To me, in high school, the teacher that stood out the most from the crowd was Mrs. Ruth Mavis. Mrs. Mavis was my social studies and yearbook teacher. It was very obvious she had a passion for teaching and engaging students. I was always an active learner during her lessons, and she would go above and beyond the expectations of being a teacher. We would work on your book late into the evening, way beyond the hours that she needed to be there. She was always kind, but knew just what to say to get us back on track, and she showed that she cared, which made me want to work as hard as I could to impress her. I never forgot the end of my 12th grade year when she wasn't afraid to shed a tear because my class was moving on. Through that action, I was aware more than ever that she cared about us and wanted to see us succeed inside and outside of the classroom. Fifteen years ago, I was recognized as a scholarship recipient, just as these ladies and gentlemen, and Mrs. Ruth Mavis was my mentor teacher. Ten years ago, I walked into my first classroom in the Algonac Community School District where I graduated from and still teach, and was delivered a floral bouquet from Ruth congratulating me on my first day as a professional educator. Wow, I thought, she still remembers me. And today, she's also here to accompany me in giving this keynote address. I also want to mention that she did not hesitate in accepting the invitation to come along. This is the dedication and kind spirit that I've always witnessed from Ruth. I'd love for her to stand up so we could recognize her for being an outstanding person, educator, and most of all, mentor. Ruth probably didn't know that what she was doing in her classroom was going to guide me and possibly a slew of other individuals throughout my teaching profession. She inspired me. She made me recognize how imperative it is to show my students how much I care about them and how much I want to see them succeed. Teaching just, isn't just about covering the curriculum, it's about believing in children and building relationships with them. The mentor teachers in this room today have all accomplished something very special. They have touched the life of an individual enough to inspire them to want to make a difference in others by becoming teachers themselves. The mentors here probably have had a mentor of their own, have definitely been a mentor to these individuals, and have most likely created future mentors in our scholarship recipients. I feel this quote from the Greek philosopher Nikos Kazentakis says it all. "Ideal teachers are those who use themselves as bridges over which they invite their students to cross, then having facilitated their crossing joyfully collapse, encouraging them to create bridges of their own." I would love for the mentor teachers to please stand up and be recognized for their outstanding efforts. These particular teachers have become mentors because our scholarship recipients became witnesses to how meaningful the world of education is and were willing to set goals in order to move forward towards their own teaching career. Taking the next step to apply for the St. Clair County Association of School Boards Scholarship was only the start to their journey. These future educators must put forth the same dedication, passion, and energy their own mentors displayed. Since they have been chosen out of many applicants, I'm sure it's fair to say they will put forth their best efforts and they will make an impact on their own students one day. Sitting in front of us, we have a collection of intelligent, hard-working students who have a rooted passion for education, the perfect combination for success. Let's show today's scholarship recipients how absolutely proud of them we are by standing and giving them a round of applause. No matter all the changes in edu, excuse me, no matter all the changes in education, no matter how well-kept a school's facilities are, no matter the textbooks students use, the most important part of educating children is still the teacher that is interacting with students, encouraging them that any goal is achievable. Thank you and congratulations, scholarship recipients and mentors.
Thank you, Stephanie, and now moving forward, before we get too far along, the nice lady here to my right is Karen McHugh. She is the Vice President of the County Association of School Boards, and somewhere around here is Kim Day, who has been a traffic director. You've all heard from her either by email, telephone, or postage, and we're glad to have both of them here to help us today because it just wouldn't be right if they were not. Okay, I've been here before, so here we go. We'll start off with Alyssa Cook and her mentor John Highstreet. Alyssa's, Alyssa's parents are Paul and Jane Cook. Alyssa plans to start her post-secondary education close to home at St. Clair County Community College. She believes that in a world with so much bad, children can see beauty through art. Thus, Alyssa wants to share her love of art with others through teaching. Alyssa said that Mr. Highstreet has influenced her decision to pursue her education because he makes learning interesting, is fair, and willing to help students who are in need. Alyssa, congratulations.
Hi. Thank you for this. I picked Mr. Highstreet because I remember when I was little and it was so much fun to go to school because you just, you learn so much, and then, I'm sorry, I'm gonna cry. But as you go through middle school and high school, it becomes a little monotonous and it's less fun, and having Mr. Highstreet has been for four years, he brought the love of learning back to my life, and I appreciate it.
From KPEC, we have Benjamin Muslakovich and his mentor Janet Sherratt. Ben's parents are Ben and Phyllis Muslakovich. Benjamin plans to start his post-high school journey at Spring Arbor University while he will pursue a degree in mathematics. Benjamin's passion for teaching was expressed in a very thoughtful essay submitted to his high school counselor. To summarize, Benjamin feels that children can achieve a fulfilling life through good examples set by their teachers and others. Since Ms. Sherratt's character includes everything that makes a good teacher great, Benjamin said that she embodies what he wants to be as a person and as a teacher. Benjamin, congratulations.
Education is empowering our future young men and women to crave life full of success and amazing opportunities. Ms. Sherratt has shown me the significance and joys of having such impact on our future generations. She has encouraged not only me, but countless others through the years to be all that we can be and to go after what we want in our lives. Ms. Sherratt is more than an amazing mentor, but an amazing motivator who deserves to be recognized in our community. I hope that through the years, I can make as large of a positive impact on students as my mentor has. Thank you.
From Marine City, Madeline DiBucci, and her mentor is Paul Dimmer, who is not here this afternoon, but he is a third-time mentor, the record being five. He was also named a mentor in 1997 and in 2005. Madeline's parents are Rick and Jennifer DiBucci. Madeline plans to attend, pursue secondary degree in chemistry and math at Oakland University. Through the teaching profession, Madeline feels that she can continue to make a positive impact on others. Madeline says that the teacher should not be viewed as the enemy, but an ally. By example, Mr. Dimmer, Madeline says, helped her uncover a future that she would have otherwise discarded. Madeline, congratulations.
When I walked into Mr. Dimmer's room, I was solely there for science. I was obsessed with science, chemistry, forensic sciences, anything you can name. But when I studied under him as a student, he showed so much enthusiasm and believed that it's not about the subject that he should teach for you, to educate you. It should actually be inspiring you to find exactly what you want to do in life, how you want to become, how you want to be remembered. He wanted us as students to succeed no matter what we did with our lives, and I think that is very important as a teacher, to always support your students and always inspire them to do what they deem is best for them. Thank you.
From St. Clair, Lauren Dombek and her mentor Rita McNeely. Lauren's parents are Brian and Patricia Dombek. Lauren has selected Saginaw Valley State University to begin pursuing her degree in elementary education. Through, in part, her work as a tutor, Lauren has experienced the rewarding process of helping a child master something they have been struggling with. It was fifth-grade teacher Rita McNeely that inspired Lauren to become a teacher because of her strong enthusiasm for teaching and her ability to change, challenge individual students. Lauren, congratulations.
It's funny the things that you remember from fifth grade. Like, for example, I remember learning about the constellations, and to this day, I still look up and try to find Orion's Belt at night. And another thing I remember is never to go back to Ms. McNeely's room with mud on your shoes after playing soccer all recess long. But I'd just like to thank Ms. McNeely for being such a good role model. Her enthusiasm for teaching and learning is what inspired me to become a teacher. I just hope that I can be as patient and caring with my students that I have as she was with students like me. Thank you.
From Marysville, Ryan Basely and his mentor Helen Taylor. Ryan's parents are Ken and Natalie Basely. After graduating from Marysville High School, Ryan plans to attend Bob Jones University, where he will study special education. Working with students with disabilities is the joy of Ryan's life, specifically students with autism, Asperger's, and Down Syndrome. It was through positive experiences at Ms. Taylor's high school special education class that Ryan realized he wanted to make a difference in students' lives. Ryan, congratulations.
First of all, I'd like to thank the school board for the scholarship and also for Mrs. Taylor for being here today and being my mentor. I don't actually attend her classroom, but I'm in there daily with her and with the students, interacting with them, and it's just a joy and a blessing to be with them and able to develop a relationship with them, with students who sometimes can't talk or can't just interact like a normal child could. And you have to have a special bond, I would say, to be able to interact with a student and develop a relationship with them who are very hesitant to allow outsiders into their lives, so I've been very blessed with that opportunity. I'd just like to thank the Lord for giving me the desire that I have. I've had this, I've known the one kid since third grade now, and I've been with him through high school, and it'll be sad to see him go, and as I move on too, but I can't wait to teach other kids and be able to be an inspiration and also a role model in their lives as well. Thank you.
From Memphis, we have Krista Maubuff and her mentor Deborah Papuga. Krista's parents are Jeff and Sue Maubuff. Krista's choice for college is Calvin College, where she will study social work and Spanish. Krista feels that a career in social work will prepare her to help teens overcome their issues, which often affect them academically. Krista says it is school counselors like Ms. Papuga who, that demonstrate that counseling helps students carry on with life's issues as well as their education. Krista, congratulations.
Ms. Papuga has shown me the relationship between education and social work, being that a student cannot achieve their best when they are burdened down or not receiving the proper support from home. I plan to be the support for those students and enable them to achieve the best, the best that they can academically by pursuing a degree in social work at Calvin College in the fall. Thank you, Ms. Papuga. Thank you.
From Port Huron High School, Heather Weiss and Robert Weiss, her father. Heather's other parent is Brenda Weiss. Heather has not yet settled on the college to pursue her post-secondary education. It was through her work at basketball and volleyball camps that Heather realized her love of teaching. She feels that if a person has the passion and knowledge, they should spread it to others. It's Robert, Heather's father, that provides the role model of a good teacher. Heather, congratulations.
From when I was little, watching my dad in his classroom, getting all of his cool experiments ready, and getting his work ready for all his kids, I've always known that I've wanted to be a teacher just like him. Getting to see firsthand how the time, care, and hard work he puts into his job has impacted his students has been the biggest influence on my decision to pursue a career in education. I hope one day I will be able to make the same kind of impact on my students as my dad has made on his students.
And from Port Huron Northern, Rachel King and her mentor Nancy Marshall, who is not Rachel's parents are James and Cynthia King. After graduation, Rachel plans to attend the St. Clair County Community College. Later, she will pursue secondary education in English and Science. Rachel has a love for learning and wants to inspire others to appreciate their education as well. Rachel says that a good teacher can be like a third parent and help students prepare for the world that waits. It was Ms. Marshall's energy, enthusiasm, and personification that most influenced Rachel's decision to become a teacher. Rachel?
Although she's not here, I wanted to thank Mrs. Marshall for the many ways she's inspired me. Her effective attitude and angles of instruction were, made me never want to stop learning. And another thing was the perfect balance that she had between fun and discipline. I just can't thank her enough for inspiring me to continue my education, especially to the field of education as a career. Thank you.
And from Yale, Travis McIntyre and his mentor Jack Hennessy. Jack is also a third-time mentor, again, the record is five. He was also named a mentor in 1994 and in 1995. Travis's parents are Stephen and Laurie McIntyre. Travis is chosen to attend the University of Michigan, where he will pursue a degree in mathematics. Travis is determined to be the type of teacher that has both the knowledge and the ability to help students understand and apply their knowledge of a subject level to the real world. Mr. Hennessy is gifted with these abilities, as he demonstrated in Travis's seventh and eighth grades mathematics courses. Travis, congratulations.
I'm very glad to be here to recognize Mr. Hennessy, but I'm also really glad that something like this, as an opportunity, has arisen for all of these students throughout all of these schools, because education is one of the most important things that anybody can ever have in their lives to get them to where they want to be. And these mentors, these teachers, and these educators throughout their lives are one of the most important things that someone must see, that this is how their student will come out to be, is who they learn from. And through the two years that I had Mr. Hennessy, I learned many valuable life lessons, as well as one of the most important, basic, core courses in mathematics that I've used today throughout my high school career. Mr. Hennessy has brought me to live my life as a hard worker and to pursue the education I desire in mathematics. He has also shown me that my actions in the classroom are mine, and I'm responsible for those, no matter what I do, and I hope that others can enjoy the mathematics that they desire through my teachings at the collegiate level when I get there one day. I hope to look back as an educator and say, you know what? I taught the future. Thank you very much.
And from St. Clair County Community College, Jennifer Prax, and her mentors Laura Booth and Cindy Friend. Jennifer's parents are Paul and Sheila Prax. Jennifer is a graduate of Port Huron Northern High School. She currently attends SC4 and plans to transfer to the Saginaw Valley State University Program. It is through Jennifer's work at a daycare center and also at the SC4 Math Center, working as a tutor, that she realized her love of watching people improve their skills. She wants to influence the shape of children's lives, just as hers was changed by two of her teachers in parochial school, Laura Booth and Cindy Friend. Jennifer?
Thank you. Good afternoon. When I first sat down and began to think about what teacher most influenced my decision to enter into the field of education, I couldn't choose just one. Mrs. Friend and Mrs. Booth have both been a huge part of not only my education, but my three siblings' education as well. They have not only guided me through my academics, they've guided me spiritually along the way. They've taught me the importance of confidence with humility, character, and striving to achieve without being afraid to ask for guidance. They've showed me how to be a peace builder and how satisfying it feels to help others. They helped shape me into the person I am today, and I can't thank them enough for the dedication and encouragement they gave and continue to give to me. They have had such a lasting impact on me that I've decided to become a teacher as well. Mrs. Friend and Mrs. Booth, thank you for everything you've done. I hope one day to be able to change other students' lives the way you've changed mine. In closing, I'd like to thank the St. Clair County Association of School Boards for this wonderful opportunity to express my appreciation to my teachers who inspired me, as well as allowing me to further my education. I am truly thankful.
Now we go to the Outstanding Board Member Award portion of our program, and we'll start off with the superintendents, who will introduce one another in succession, starting with Mr. Michael Shero from Algonac.
I'm very pleased to introduce Mr. Lee Bristol as the Algonac Community Schools Outstanding Board Member. Lee has served on the Algonac Community School Board since his elec, since his election in 1992, nearly 20 years ago. Lee served as treasurer of the board from 1992 until 2000, president from 2000 until 2004, and vice president from 2006 until 2011, and he once again serves as president at this time. He has earned the Certified Board Member Award from the Michigan Association of School Boards, attends M A S B conferences regularly, and keeps current with state and national trends in education. Lee continues to serve as a member on the Building and Site Committee, playing an important role in decisions that have been made over the years regarding the maintenance, expansion, and additions of our district facilities. He actively promoted our 2007 bond issue and closely monitored the extensive bond work that has recently come to completion. Lee also served many years in the district's curriculum and technology committees and continues to be extremely knowledgeable in those areas. Lee has maintained perfect attendance at regular, special, and special board meetings of the board in all but five of his nearly 20 years of service. Lee Bristol can be described as a dependable and steady board member who can be counted on to take his job seriously. Lee's knowledge of finance, technology, and education has been an asset in developing long- and short-term goals of the district. His many years of service to the public of education and his commitment to the students of the district are evidence in his longstanding dedication to the educational community. For these reasons, I am proud to recognize Mr. Lee Bristol.
And also very happy to introduce Superintendent of KPEC Schools, Mr. Jerry Genix.
Well, I'm very privileged today to introduce the honoree from KPEC Community Schools, Mr. Paul Libkey. Mr. Libkey served on the school board from 1999 through 2002, and it wasn't a real long-term of service, but it was influential in a key time in KPEC commu, in the KPEC community, when the school district was growing, when there was a lot to deal with, and Mr. Libkey, his life has been personified by service to the community. He served as police chief in KPEC, he's a lifelong resident of KPEC, and I think his, even, even up until just a few months ago, he was working in the school as a contracted custodian. And I bring that up to tell you, this is a man whose life has been personified by servant leadership, willing to do what it took to pitch in and help his community, whether it was serve on school board, be a police chief, help clean schools, send kids to school and have them graduate from our school, go on into education, a man whose life has been signified by servant leadership. So we're great, very grateful in KPEC to recognize Mr. Paul Libkey as our honoree this year. Thank you, Paul. And now it's my privilege to recognize and introduce Dr. Rodney Green from East China.
It's my pleasure to introduce our outstanding board member for East China School District, Michael McCarty, who stands behind me. Mr. McCarty? Mr. McCarthen has been on the Board since 1989, so 23 years of Board service, which is a little hard to believe, except for that's the year I became a Superintendent, 1989. And so I've been 23 years as a Superintendent, so I know exactly what it means to be a Board Member for that long. But the thing about Mr. McCarthen is that he brings such steady leadership to the Board and has for all these years. He's been President of the Board since 2002 and Vice President before that, and there are so many times that his influence is appreciated in that steady hand that we have. But several things that we've accomplished during his tenure has been bond issue help, so he's helped on bond issue committees, and whenever we've had a crisis, tragedy, where we've lost a student or lost a teacher, Mr. McCarthen's expertise as Community Mental Health Director has really helped our community and our leadership team and our staff. So it's with great pleasure that I introduce Mr. Michael McCarthen as the East China Outstanding School Board Member. And next is Jamie Kane, Superintendent at Marysville.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Thank you, everyone. It's my sincere pleasure to recognize Mr. Larry Egan as Marysville Community Schools Outstanding Board Member for this school year. Mr. Egan actually retired from our School Board as of January and has been enjoying his retirement, but Mr. Egan spent over 21 years on and off, spanning a period of nearly three decades, serving the community of Marysville on our School Board. He and his wife Barb have three children that all graduated from Marysville High School. His service began in the turbulent mid-1980s when the district struggled to pass millages, was laying off staff, and had to close one of the elementary schools. He chose to stick through this, see the district through the tough times, rather than leave the task to someone else. In the 1990s, he was re-elected to the Board, working on a number of committees and overseeing the district's renovation and reopening of Morton Elementary School, the expansion of the district's curriculum, especially the offering of advanced placement courses, and expanding dual enrollment, to mention just a few highlights. And over the past several years, Larry served another couple terms on the Board, playing a very instrumental role in the effort to pass a $73 million bond program, a feat thought impossible just a couple years earlier. He volunteered to serve in our Building and Site Committee, overseeing the progress and path of the building program from beginning to end. His experience in the construction trades proved invaluable as we faced a number of challenges with site work, budgets, and setting priorities. As I mentioned, he recently chose to retire and live close by his children and grandchildren, but he certainly left a permanent lasting mark on the community of Marysville. His motto over the years has been "It's All About Kids," and his actions certainly have always supported those words. Larry, thank you for serving Marysville so generously. Almost forgot, it's my pleasure to introduce Superintendent of Schools in Memphis, Frank
Memphis Schools are proud to honor Mrs. Windling this year as our Outstanding Board Member. Mrs. Windling and her family actually are in Ohio running a marathon, so she couldn't be here today. Mrs. Windling was nominated by the administrative staff as this year's Outstanding Board Member for her dedication to good education, her efforts to keep current on educational issues both within the district and throughout the state and country. Beyond her Board of Education duties, Michelle is actively involved as a parent and has been instrumental in organizing and coaching our students at the elementary level about health and exercise by forming a running club. Mrs. Windling, along with the elementary staff, also organizes and conducts a 5K race-walk each spring that includes students from several area districts. Last year, over 700 students participated in this popular activity, which is sponsored by Pepsi Incorporated, where Mrs. Windling works. On the Board, Mrs. Windling's responsibilities include Personnel, Negotiations, and Finance Committees, District School Improvement, and Bond and Building Committees. In addition, Mrs. Windling serves as Vice President of the Board. She has been a member of the Memphis Board of Education for six years. Michelle and her husband Mike have three children in Memphis Schools, and as a result of both her Board involvement and her children's involvement, she is in attendance at many district functions. Memphis Schools are very lucky to have a person of Michelle Windling's caliber and dedication on the Board. She is an all-around actively involved Board Member. Congratulations, Mrs. Windling. And I'd like to introduce Ron Wollene from Port Yorn Schools.
Thanks, Frank. It is with great pleasure that I can publicly recognize and thank Rasha Damaski as our pick to receive the Outstanding Port Yorn Area School District Member of the Year. First, and certainly foremost, Rasha is a wonderful parent, mother, and wife to three incredible daughters, Maria, Leah, and Sarah, and a loving husband and dad, Dr. Walid Damaski. Rasha has been absolutely instrumental in the positive progress our district is going. She's been involved with our PTAs, volunteered at our annual science fairs, taught French in our after-school program. She continues to volunteer in science clubs, art appreciation programs, and our forensic clubs that we have. She has been just an active member in our community, serving on numerous associations and organizations such as Port Yorn Hospital, St. Joseph Mercy Hospital, and a member of the Community Foundation. Rasha has chaired the annual gala for the American Heart Association. And Rasha, we were so lucky that she was elected as a trustee to the Port Yorn Area School District in 2003. She was re-elected in 2007 and again in 2011, and she currently serves as the Vice President of a Board of Education. As I mentioned, she's a very active Board of the St. Clair County Community Foundation, and she also serves on the Arab Community Center for Education and Social Services. And also, she's a trustee to Center of Arab America Philanthropy and has been appointed by our Governor, Snyder, to be on the Committee of Commission of Civil Rights, and this just happened in 2012, January. In Rasha's spare time, she's a pharmacist and currently works at the CVS Pharmacy in our local communities. And with all the many things that Rasha does for our schools and our school district, her main passion is improving education and providing every possible opportunity to benefit our students and to make them competitive in our global world. She has expressed to me and others, a financially solid and academically successful school district is the backbone of a thriving community. And we congratulate Rasha for all that she does for our community and the Port Yorn Area School District, and wish her the very best. I'd like to give her a nice round of applause. And now I'd like to, Ken Nickel is not here, the Superintendent from Yale, but his substitute is Jim Heimback.
Thanks, Ron. Just a couple things about Jim Williams, who is a retired School Board Member from Yale. He could not be here today, currently living and retired happily in Mason, Michigan. Jim was a 1951 graduate of Yale High School, business owner in Yale at Williams Department Store, a longstanding advocate for students. Student needs were always his primary concern as a School Board Member, and he always made a conscious effort to provide quality staff who were fairly compensated. An anecdotal thing about, this is kind of interesting about Jim, it kind of reminds me a little bit of Brandon Inge though, so I'm not sure about this. He still holds a school record in Yale that he's certain will never be broken. He started every varsity baseball game for the Bulldogs and never got a hit. So Jim, although he couldn't be here today, we certainly would like to commend him for his services to our school district. Thanks a lot. It's my pleasure to introduce Kevin Pollak.
It's my pleasure to talk about our Board Member, Dr. Nicholas DeGracie. When you look at him, the first thing that comes to your mind is sophisticated. He has got an amazing background, and just let me touch on the things outside of the college that I found out about him as I've worked with him over the last three years. He's an amazing sailor. He helped put the Detroit Mercy merger together. He was the head of Lionel Trains. He buddies around with singer Neil Young. He and his lovely wife Sandy own a beautiful B&amp;B. He's got a doctorate in economics. He's an entrepreneur. He also gives me a lot of advice. He's helped me with running the college, told me more about how to assist the community, and has attempted to try to improve my golf game. So far, we're two for three. I want to tell you, though, what our people on the campus think of him, which is more important than anything I could think of him. This is actually the nomination form that they completed and put together. These are a list of some of the things he's done in his tenure as a Board Member. Serves on special committees to further explore Board governance policies, serves on the Board Audit and Finance Committee, traveled to Cotter and performed a program or represented perspectives on Cotter to the community, served as a moderator at the Economic Panel Discussion, twice, participates in our SC4 Health Walk, is a red carpet volunteer, is a dance competitor with his lovely wife Sandy, oh, and also helped raise funds for the college. Serves as the co-chair of the All Boards of Board Campaign for our Capital Campaign, and this is what they wrote about him. "Dr. DeGracie has often been described as an absolute asset to St. Clair County Community College due to his vast experience in management, his willingness to take on college initiatives and special projects, and his continued support and deep commitment to the community, the college, the employees, and most especially the students at SC4. His professionalism, respect, integrity, and care are evident, and Dr. DeGracie more than deserves this nomination." So, Dr. DeGracie.
It's my pleasure to introduce Charlie Andrews from St. Clair Reesaw.
Thank you. I'm standing in behalf of Mr. Dan Degrow, and I'd like to make a couple comments relative to the member on the Reesaw Board of Education that's being recognized tonight, and that's Bob Beatty. Bob, as many of you know, has been a public servant for a number of years, even decades. He served as not only the Reesaw Board of Education, currently the President, he was on the East China School Board for a number of years, and also served, I think, several terms as the Mayor of Marine City. So he represents really the best that many of you Board Members also represent, and that is service above self, a service to your communities, and we're very appreciative of the work that Mr. Beatty has been able to do for Reesaw. It was my privilege today to invite the recipients of the Academy Board of Education recognitions. Would you please, please join me right here, all four of you at the same time, please. Jeff Dennis represents our Academic Transitional Academy. Mr. Dennis is Assistant Principal at Port Yorn High School, and certainly has made a commitment to education, but he's taken that commitment to education a little bit further by helping those students in that particular academy who had struggled academically. And he's, although we're phasing that academy out, he's still providing the resources for us to be able to assist many of those students in their home schools. And Jeff, we appreciate everything you've done with the ATA. Connie Handel is a representative of the Academy of Style, a very proud professional that brings a wealth of experience to that academy. When we're through with our construction and some improvements, we will have close to 40 young people graduating from the Academy of Style as certificated cosmetologists directly out of high school. These are jobs that people can aspire to and make an outstanding living at working as a cosmetologist, and we're very proud to have Connie giving us the guidance and support to allow that miracle to happen. Connie, thank you very much. Carl Tomian, many of you recognize the face and the name. He's been not only a public servant in the Midland area, but not too recently in the city of Port Huron, more recently in the city of Algonac, and as a member of our Blue Water Middle College, really has taken on a leadership role in a truly unique public school academy. We have one of the most unique opportunities for youngsters in St. Clair County schools, many St. Clair County schools, excuse me, to enter as 11th grade students into the Blue Water Middle College, spend two more years taking primarily high school classes, but the third year as a grade 13 student, taking primarily college classes, and graduating after grade 13 with a high school diploma and an associate's degree from SC4. And it really represents the creative thinking of people like Mr. Tomian, but also the great relationship that our public schools have with SC4, and we're very appreciative of that. Abe Lever, another career educator, building administrator in the Algonac Schools, and he's taken a leadership role in, again, another truly unique academy that we charter. The Virtual Learning Academy graduates a number of students on a regular basis. We serve over 200 students who have either been expelled, have dropped out, or are no longer attending, for some reason or another, no longer attending the local K-12 schools in St. Clair County. These youngsters complete all the necessary requirements for a high school diploma based on the Michigan State standards, and they do it primarily online. They are truly virtual learners, and it's the people like Abe who have provided that structure for us to be able to continue that mission. So although you may not see them at ballgames because we don't sponsor any ball teams, you won't see them at dances or high school activities because they're in the background, providing educational opportunities for youngsters in our academies throughout St. Clair County, and we're very appreciative of all the work that you do.
At this point, we'd like to invite Kelly Jones from the Michigan Association of School Boards, who is the manager of Superintendent Search Services, to do the MASB Awards portion of our program.
Thank you. Last but not least, this is my third year coming here and giving the awards out to the School Board Members. We only have one here tonight, that's Pete Bullard. If you come on up, we're going to recognize him first since he's here. He is the recipient of the Michigan Association of School Boards Level 1 Certification, which is all 100 Level CBA classes, which is 101 through 109. And he's also the recipient of the Award of Merit this year, which is all of the 100 Level CBA classes plus 45 education credits. Let me remind you that these are School Board Members are a volunteer service, and above and beyond the conferences that they attend, these classes are usually always on the weekends and the evenings, so it's quite a big dedication in order to get your certification through MASP. The two that aren't here are Dwayne Loper, he was the recipient of the Level 1 Certification, and Amanda Zaber, she is the Award of Distinction, which means she completed all Levels 1 and 2 of the CBA classes plus 4 200 Level CBA classes. Thank you for your time.
That concludes the majority of our program. All we have to do now is say thank you to some people. You've noticed it's not lightning, it's Ruth Rose Norton has been over here taking pictures that will be provided to everybody who has had their picture taken. She does this for us at no cost to the association, and we are really appreciative of that. Let's give Rose a hand. The Reesaw Technology Department, the Reesaw Communications Office, they created the invitations that you receive, the programs you are looking at, the certificates, and even the names on the chairs. So we really appreciate, which helps us know where we're supposed to be, and we really appreciate that. And the Reesaw Education Technology Department for recording today's presentation, and they will be posting the video on the Reesaw website, so you'll be able to, at a very, not too far-off distant future, be able to go on the Reesaw website and see the video, or have relatives who are far away or people who otherwise could not be here to see this program will be able to see what happened here. And we really appreciate them doing that. They've been doing it for a number of years, and we really appreciate it. I'd like to thank the President and the Board of Trustees of St. Clair County Community College. They provide us this auditorium at no charge, they provide refreshments and help us with all sorts of the logistics of this event, and we're really appreciative of them. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank Karen McHugh for helping me hand out awards, and as I said earlier, Kim Day, who she deserves to be thanked a whole lot more than twice, but I'd like to thank her again for all she does to help me and to help all the rest of the Board Members and all the wonderful things that she does. And we'd like to thank Reesaw for all of the things that they do in support of this County Association of School Boards, because without them it wouldn't be possible. Like to thank- Like to thank Stephanie Ford for coming and doing a wonderful job on her keynote address. And like to thank all of you for coming. Now, these chairs are empty, and those are more full, so it's time to go and have a safe trip home.[1787.45][1787.45][applause][1788.45][1788.45][end of transcript]